Okay, Mayor, we can go ahead and get started.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 26, 2021, City Council meeting. I'll now call the meeting to order. Please note that this meeting is being attended by City Council and staff via Zoom teleconference. Thank you for your patience as we continue to navigate city business through this meeting process. For the benefit of the public and as required by the Brown Act, the vote will be taken by roll call. City Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Mayor Kalmick.
Present.
Mayor Protem Verapapa.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Sistarsik.
Here.
Councilmember Masalavet.
Here.
All present.
Thank you very much. We now have the approval of the agenda and waiver of full reading of resolution ordinances. By motion of the City Council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. Does anybody wish to pull a consent calendar item? Okay, hearing none. City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, Mayor. Two supplemental communications were received. They've been distributed to the council and made available to the public on the city's website.
Okay, thank you. Then I'll call for a motion and a second for the consent calendar.
I move approval of the consent calendar, the agenda, sorry.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Kalmick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Verapapa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sistarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. So now we're going to call on Lieutenant Nick Nicholas from our police department, who's going to give some presentation about our police facility dog program. Nick?
Good evening, Mayor Kalmick. Thank you very much. Good evening, City Council members, City Manager Ingram, City staff, and all of those watching online. Thank you for allowing me to discuss the police facility dog program that we've recently implemented at the Seal Beach Police Department. Next slide, Dana. Yosa is our police facility dog. She's a two-year-old Labrador Golden Retriever mix, and she's a certified facility dog, which was donated to us from Canine Companions for Independence. Since 1975, Canine Companions for Independence has bred, raised, and expertly trained service dogs in over forty commands designed to assist and motivate clients with special needs. Canine Companions has placed more than 6,700 service dogs with program graduates, including more than 230 dogs with military veterans and more than 2,000 dogs with children. Canine Companions trains four basic types of assistance dogs. The first are service dogs, which assist adults with physical disabilities by performing daily tasks. Next is hearing dogs that alert the deaf and hard of hearing to important sounds. Then there's skilled companions, which enhance independence for children and adults with physical, cognitive, and developmental disabilities. And lastly, facility dogs like Yosa, which are expertly trained dogs who partner with a facilitator working in a healthcare, visitation, education, or criminal justice setting. The estimated cost of a highly-trained canine companion facility dog like Yosa and all the follow-up and support is about $50,000. However, each facility dog is provided at no cost. Canine Companions depends on the support of tens of thousands of donors and volunteers to match facilities and people in need with service dogs like Yosa entirely free of charge. Next slide, please. So now that we know about canine companions, what exactly is a police facility dog? A facility dog is not the same as a patrol, apprehension, or detection canine. The City Council recently approved the police department to obtain a patrol, apprehension, detection canine, and we are in the process of training that dog and canine officer. However, the Seal Beach Police Department will utilize police facility dog Yosa to aid in the investigation of crimes, provide comfort to victims and witnesses during interviews and court proceedings, to help victims process grief and loss, to lower tensions and stress of community members and staff after traumatic events, to work with children to build relationships, conduct senior citizen visits and welfare checks, to engage with the public during community events such as coffee with a cop, and so much more. Next slide, please. Thank you. So how did Yosa come to the city of Seal Beach? Canine Companions carefully selects and breeds Labrador Retrievers, Golden Retrievers, and the crosses of the two after an intensive evaluation process. The breeding program and staff check on each dog's temperament, training ability, health, physical attributes, and littermate trends. Only then are the best of the best chosen as canine companions breeder dogs. Once the puppy is born, after about the first eight weeks of the puppy's life, they're then transferred to volunteer puppy raisers. Volunteer puppy raisers provide specially-bred puppies a safe home, take them to obedience classes, teach them basic commands and manners, and provide socialization opportunities such as going to public outings and medical appointments. Next slide, please. When the dogs are about a year and a half old, they're sent to a regional training center where they receive professional training for about six to nine months. The dogs are taught advanced commands and evaluated for placement. Canine's companions' dogs receive rigorous medical and temperamental screenings to assure that every dog that graduates will be healthy, happy, and appropriate in their role. Once the dogs are evaluated for placement, approved applicants are sent to a two-week team training class where the final placement is determined by canine companion staff. One note about training is that canine companions' dogs do not work for food, treats, or toys. Their reward, or in another word, their paycheck, is just love and praise. After a nearly year-long application process, which involved a very detailed application packet, letters of support, a statement of purpose, and several interviews, the Seal Beach Police Department was approved to be matched with a certified facility dog. Once approved, I went to the Regional Training Center in Oceanside and was matched with Yosa. By this point, Yosa was fully trained, but I needed to learn how to appropriately handle and care for a facility dog. Yosa was selected to work for the Seal Beach Police Department because of her unobtrusive and calm demeanor, which is necessary in a criminal justice setting. Yosa lives with me, comes back and forth to work when I do, and in our office, she has her own bed and many, many toys. Next slide, please. Since being partnered with Yosa in February, we have responded to several notable incidents. A few weeks ago, the police department received a call of a medical aid involving a young child. The child became unresponsive and was transported to a local hospital. Yosa and I went to the hospital to provide comfort to the anxious parents while the medical staff tended to the child. Yosa also helped to comfort some of the officers who responded to the scene, especially to those who had young children of their own. Yosa and I also visited the Orange Police Department along with police facility dogs from the Hawthorne Police Department, Fullerton Police Department, and Corona Police Department. They're pictured there on the right. The facility dogs met with the staff before and after a critical incident stress debriefing following a shooting in their city. Most recently, following a traffic collision involving a person who passed away, it was a fatal traffic collision, Yosa and I responded to the traffic investigators and helped them as they interviewed those involved in this traumatic incident. Yosa has also helped calm the nerves of victims prior to them being interviewed by the media, and she's quickly become a very loved member of the Seal Beach Police Department. She receives a ton of love, belly rubs, and back scratches throughout the day, and provides an incredible amount of joy and support to our staff, especially after stressful incidents. Next slide, please. As discussed, this was a very involved process to apply for and be placed with a highly-trained facility dog. I want to publicly acknowledge and thank the following people who helped at all stages of the process: Hawthorne Police Services Officer Lamika Bell, pictured here with the police facility dog Scotty; Fullerton Police Community Services Officer Kristy Wells and Facility Dog Nubbin; Corona Police Captain Anna Ralston and Facility Dog Raider; and lastly, all of the donors, volunteers, and staff at Canine Companions. I'm incredibly proud to be part of this wonderful organization that donates $50,000 dogs free of charge to people and facilities in need. To find out more about Canine Companions or to donate, please visit cci.org or call 1-800-572-2275. Next slide, please. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions and also invite the council and city staff to come meet Yosa anytime. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Nick, for that presentation. Yosa will be a great addition, obviously, to our city. Next, I'm honored to offer a proclamation this evening honoring Julia Bogani of the Tongva Gabrieleano Tribe. So today, we honor Julia Bogani, a revered Tongva elder and cultural ambassador who passed away on March 28. She was a member of the Tongva tribe, served as member of the tribal council, and as their cultural consultant. Julia worked for more than thirty years to spread awareness of the Tongva tribe, the original inhabitants of the Los Angeles Basin. Julia constantly, incessantly, and voluntarily taught and attended meetings to help her tribe, usually without compensation. To those who knew Julia, knew she was an unstoppable force in perpetual motion. She loved what she did and somehow had limitless energy and care for people. She worked tirelessly to gain recognition for her tribe, to counteract the erasure that the colonial system brought with the missions, the ranchos, and the American land takeover. Julia's accolades and title provide not only a snapshot of her life's work. She was a member of the California Native American College Board, an elder in residence for Pitzer College's Native Youth to College Program. In 2010, the Aquarium of the Pacific selected Julia for its Heritage Award, and in 2021, the California Missions Foundation awarded her the Chairman's Award. As Mayor of the city of Seal Beach, I do hereby publicly proclaim and honor Julia Bogani for her tirelessly and exemplary work on behalf of the Tongva Gabrieleano Tribe this 26th day of April in the year 2021. So we will be sending that along to the tribal people. Now it's time for oral communications. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any item not on the agenda unless authorized by law. No other business shall be considered. All email comments the city clerk received before the start of the meeting were distributed to City Council and made available to the public on the city's website. Email comments received after the start of the meeting will be forwarded to the City Council after the meeting. City Clerk, do we have any emailed comments?
Yes, Mayor. Two emailed comments were received. They've been distributed to council and made available to the public on the city's website.
Thank you. City Attorney's Report. City Attorney Steele, do you have anything to report this evening?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I have no report this evening. There was no closed session.
Thank you. City Managers Report. City Manager Ingram, you have anything to report?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one item to report tonight. As the council is aware, the city's been working on budget development for fiscal year 2122, so for next year. In an ongoing effort to encourage community participation and expand community input, this year, the city introduced two new public outreach efforts. The first is a community engagement survey to gather community feedback from residents on their budgetary spending priorities. These priorities will be considered during the current budget development process for next fiscal year. With this survey, community members will be able to communicate what activities, services, and capital improvement projects are most important to them and how the city is doing overall in providing services and programs to our community. The survey can be found on the homepage of the city website, and we would greatly appreciate community feedback on this timely survey. Also, I wanted to highlight a second new outreach effort in conjunction with the survey as the city has updated the city's budget page on the Finance Department section on the city's website and created a new email whereby community members can email questions and comments to the Finance Department related to our budget. The new email address is budget@seabhca.gov. So again, we are hopeful that the community will take advantage of these two new outreach efforts this year to encourage community participation in our annual budget process. And finally, related to this, I wanted to announce confirmed dates as of today for two City Council Budget Workshops and a new community budget town hall meeting, so a total of three meetings to solicit additional input from the community about the city's proposed annual budget for next fiscal year. A council budget workshop will be held virtually on Thursday, May 13 at 5:30 p.m. to discuss the proposed general fund operating budget. A second council budget workshop will be held virtually on Tuesday, May 25 at 5:30 p.m. to discuss the proposed capital improvement program budget, and the new community budget town hall meeting will be held virtually on Tuesday, June 1 at 5:30 p.m. Again, these are all opportunities for residents to give feedback and ask questions related to the city's proposed budget, as well as our budget development process, and we really hope that residents will utilize these opportunities to participate. In that regard, residents will be able to participate in these virtual meetings by submitting written comments and/or via live comments and can contact the city clerk's office for additional information on how to do that prior to each meeting. And that concludes my report tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Now it's time for council comments, general council member comments, and reporting pursuant to AB 1234. So let's see if Sandra Masalavet has any comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple. Mosquitoes are going to be abundant this summer, spring and summer, and the Vector Control Agency has developed a very robust information availability program, and I will be speaking with the city manager this week, and hopefully, we'll be able to take on some of those efforts that Vector is undertaking. And for the Sand District, they are very much in process of making some infrastructure improvements to their facilities, and they are working with trash haulers to discuss the methodology of processing food waste. When the law becomes effective, and it's going to be really complicated, but in any case, everyone's working on what they're supposed to be doing as we are, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Verapapa.
Nothing to report this time. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Sistarsik.
Good evening. I attended a West Orange County Water Board meeting where we approved the yearly budget for the Joint JPA. I also attended a school, Los Alamos Unified School District Working Group meeting, where the discussion included our joint use agreement with them, possibility of redoing the gymnasium floor at McGaw, and a discussion of possibility of keeping the pool at McGaw Elementary. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Moore.
Nothing to report this evening.
Okay, thank you, Tom. For my part, I've attended our monthly Orange County Fire Authority meeting, which is becoming quite spirited, and it's interesting that there's a lot more talk than in the past about trying to create better value or perhaps look at ways of saving money for the contract cities, which is Seal Beach. We are a contract city. So we're continuing to pursue some of those ideas. I attended both our, by Zoom, our SCAG meeting, which is the Southern California Association of Governments. We've had a lot of discussions about the housing element and what's called the RENA numbers, which is the number of housing units that the state has mandated that every city has to be able to show that property can be zoned for that. And so we're going through that whole process, as well as OCOG, which is the Orange County kind of subset of SCAG, a lot of alphabets here. And I had the opportunity to meet with our new Congresswoman, Michelle Steele's staff, and present them with our wish list of many things, such as help with sand replenishment. Apparently, she is actually working on introducing legislation that might be able to get us the approval by the Army Corps to be able to get sand for the replenishment in Surfside, which of course affects both the cities of Huntington Beach and Newport Beach. And I also had a chance to meet with our new county supervisor, Katrina Foley, with the same requests and so forth, and actually had a very nice conversation with her this past Saturday. She came into Seal Beach to watch the car parade that we had, which was incredibly successful, from what I understand. So we also talked about some issues and needs that our city could use some help with, and that would be my report for this evening. Next would be our consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are enacted by a single motion, with the exception of items removed by council members. Since we did not have any removed, I'll need a motion and a second for the consent calendar items.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you. Thank you. City Clerk Harper, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Kalmick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Verapapa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sistarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. So we have no public hearings this evening. We have no unfinished or continued business. And under new business, we will have a description of item J, and we'll have Director Steve Meider to present this to us.
Thank you. So, I'm a mayor member to the council. The coastline between Anaheim Bay and Newport Harbor, or Newport Bay, is dependent on the PRI Beach Sand Nourishment Project to replenish erosion and eroding sand. The construction of jetties at the Anaheim Bay, Los Angeles, Los Angeles Long Beach Backwater System, and the engineering flood control structures that were installed in the San Ana River have prevented natural transportation of sediments to replenish sand depleted by winter storms, waves, currents, and other natural sand depletion actions from the 1930s to the 1950s. To remedy this situation, in 1962, Congress passed the Rivers and Harbors Act, which required the Army Corps to address the sand depletion impacts. This led to the first beach nourishment project, stage one, in 1964, which deposited 1.5 million cubic yards of sand along the Surfside Beach. The natural migration of sand moves southerly, in a southerly fashion, transporting sand from Surfside Beach down to Newport Beach. These projects were scheduled every five to seven years, and the last one was conducted in 2010, which would be stage 13. So now we're at stage, we were at stage 13, actually, now stage 12. Now, stage 13 was supposed to be scheduled in 2008, but was delayed indefinitely by the federal government due to the lack of funding. To date, the Army Corps has not been able to fund stage 13, is uncertain of possible funding in the near future. The coastline along Anaheim Bay Harbor and Newport Bay has experienced notable degradation since the stage 12 project, where Surfside Colony Residence Areas, beaches, walkways, and parking lots and other coastal assets are believed to be threatened by storms and high tides. The proposed resolution will draw attention to the eroded coastline and highlight the importance of sand nourishment to the Army Corps and the federal government. Failure to act on this immediately could result in property damage and pose a public safety concern if flooding occurs. Similar support resolutions and letters will be adopted by the project stakeholders, including the County of Orange, Department of Boating and Waterways, City of Newport Beach, City of Huntington Beach, and Surfside Stormwater Protection District. And that concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Any questions from council members? I can go one at a time or... satisfied? Okay. We'll then call for a motion, a second, to pass Adopt Resolution Number 7144. Do we have a motion and a second, please?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Could we have a vote by roll call, please?
Mayor Kalmick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Verapapa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sistarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavet, how do you vote?
Yes.
That passes 5-0. Thank you. Next item is item K, which is the Street Lighting Assessment District, and we'll call upon our Finance Director, City Treasurer, Telford, please.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Before you tonight are three resolutions relating to the annual levy of the street lighting assessment. As you are aware, this is a routine item that is done every year, and this is just the first step in the process. To give you a quick overview, the city's consultant, Will Dan Financial Services, has assisted us in developing the items before you tonight. The estimated expenses, including utility costs, assessment engineer costs, and legal costs are $220,000. Of this amount, approximately $142,000 would come from assessments, and the remaining $78,000 would be subsidized by the general fund. It's important to note that these amounts are only estimates. If the actual costs incurred are below the $220,000 estimate, the general fund would subsidize less. At the end of the year, the general fund is only subsidizing the expenditures in excess of the $142,000. We are proposing a public hearing on May 26 where the City Council would consider protests and adopt resolution confirming the diagram and assessments in tonight's agenda report. The only recommendation for you tonight are to approve the three resolutions which begin the process, set the public hearing date, and approve the engineer's report, which shows no increase in assessments for 2122. This concludes my presentation, and I am available for questions.
Do we have any council member comments or questions? Okay, hearing none. Hey, hearing none. I'll now call for a motion and a second for item K and the Resolution 7145, 7146, and 7147, and which 7146 sets the date for the public hearing on May 24th of 2021. A motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. City Clerk Harper, would you have to do the vote for us, please, by roll call? Please. City Clerk Harper?
Mayor Kelmick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Verapapa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sistarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you very much. So we are now at adjournment for this meeting. I will now adjourn the city council in memory of Julia Bogani, an elder of the Tongva Gabrieleino Tribe, on Monday, to Monday, May 10th, 2021, at 5:30 PM to meet in closed session if deemed necessary. Now, for those that are going to be participating in the Special Successor Agency Matters meeting, please stay on the Zoom meeting. All others may now be excused from this meeting. Thank you.